All right, the regular meeting of the City of Oneonta coming to council October 4.
Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Riesberger?
Here.
Next member, the question?
Here.
Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Rafter? Councilmember Fox?
Here.
You would lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice or honor.
We have, it's been delayed a little bit, but here we are, we've got a presentation to make. Fifty years ago, Al Lutz decided he'd step up, mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, and it holds true right now. Al, the City of Oneonta, congratulations to you for fifty years. No, congratulations to the City of Oneonta for fifty years of your service. We so much appreciate it. And I have the New York Conference of Mayors. Which I'll read to you. The New York State Conference of Mayors and municipal officials presents this fifty-year certificate of public service to Sayers Albert Lutz. Never seen that word before. Oneonta, in recognition of fifty years of distinguished public service to your community, the New York State Conference of Mayors is pleased and honored to publicly acknowledge your dedication and commitment. And let's get a picture with Terry here. We'll get a bit of the city. Congratulations on the floor.
Yours, yours, I know.
Well, I want to hear a couple of things.
I was with the radio station many, many years ago. And one of my jobs is come to a common council meeting and do reports about what we guys do for a living as administrators for the city. During that same time, I was, as a reporter, I went through a lot of fires. And I was constantly pulling hose and raising ladders. And a couple of guys said to me at one point, why don't you join the department so you get paid for what you do? So I did. That was nineteen seventy-two-ish thing. I remember lots of things from those years of the fire service, one of which was a fire on Lower Main Street at one point when my son was in the hospital in Bassett dying from cancer. And I had a call from the doctor that said, get your butt to Cooperstown because we need to talk. So I had to leave that fire. And it turned out they wanted to try marijuana for his nausea, which didn't do a damn thing. I have the highest respect and admiration for these guys that do this work every day. If you don't spend any time with them or in the fire station, you really don't know what goes into the work that goes on protecting the people of the city in town of Oneonta. It's amazing. It's a tough job, and I'm glad I don't have to do it anymore, but I'm glad I had a chance to do it when I did. Thank you all.
That we end this meeting. All right. Excuse me, I'm just getting over on the other side, absolutely on the other side. I see Dr. Georgensen looking at me, other side of the couch.
Isn't it bad? Aren't we all?
Yeah, right. Welcome to this momentous lifetime. We do have petitioners and public hearings that we'd like to give air to. We'll start with the public hearing for the restore New York application for the Twenty-Seven Market Street Revitalization Project and property as such list for Twenty-Seven Market Street.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody who is here to speak on that? Yes. Let's start with QAJ. If you could just introduce yourself and your home address, city, and I'll let you rock and roll.
AJ Hamble, Twenty Gardener Place, Apartment Ninety-One. I was curious, if the building is torn down, what will occupy it after the building and crapola is cleared?
We are hoping for development. We have good reason to feel confident that we'll have development there. So we should be apartment one.
So like what type of development?
We'll have to see.
Okay.
Cross your fingers, we have confidence. Any other folks? Yes?
Hello. First time. I'm here for my sister. She had a question. So basically, I told her I'd read for. The meeting in regards to the parking garage, a valid concern was brought up by Scott Harrington.
Could you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kathy Varelli.
Thank you.
I am with my sister on Main Street at One Fifty-Five Main Street, Teresa's Emporium.
Thank you.
In regards to the parking garage, a valid concern was brought up by Scott Harrington about the third-floor structure not being fixed. The architects said that it is not structurally sound and cannot be fixed with the amount of money looking to be spent on this project. When we have any snow, we lose the use of the third floor due to the weight of the snow. They said the third floor would continue to deteriorate and will, in the future, sooner than later, will no longer be usable. The third floor is where a lot of people park that find it difficult to walk long distances to get to Main Street. Again, we are losing not only the fifteen to twenty parking spots on the first floor for the plus hub, we will be losing however many are on the third floor. Eliminating more parking will be a problem when the new tenants arrive for our Diet Street Apartments and the Springbrook Apartments. There has already been talk of charging residents for parking passes, as they do in larger cities with residents that have more revenue than ours do. I do not think it is wise to put a Band-Aid on fixing the third floor. Instead of splitting the funds between two projects, it may be wise to do one at a time and do it well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on this particular subject?
Paul Patterson, Forty Home Street. It's nice to see Sabupin here, looking back for several years ago when this all started. And I was going through the websites and the different changes and whatnot. So there have been a lot of different changes over time. And I wasn't clear from the article today, the demolition of the Ford Building, is that where the transit's going to go, or no?
No.
No, okay. Okay, that answers that question. I wanted to be clear because looking at different articles over time, it was kind of move back and forth. I think that's the best place for it not to be, because this way you can get development. And I think that in part transit funds that wouldn't normally be available can do some enhancements to that building. But there was another point at which, and you answered this question pretty much already, that we didn't want to consider the parking garage because it would take seventy-five to ninety parking places away. And I was thinking, how could that statement have been made by a city official? And I'm just wondering if councilpeople ever went to the transit facility we currently have? And if you could look around and say, how is this ninety places? And I couldn't understand why you would need more space in the parking garage as what is needed already and is adequate on Main Street and just moving that. So it looks like the fact that you were talking about twelve spaces maybe, it seems like that has been addressed.
That was an earlier iteration of the plans that, you know.
But now it's going to be twelve.
Well, again, we're not looking at taking a chunk of the parking garage or transit.
I just couldn't understand why you would need to make something that works, make it bigger. And sometimes when there's lots of money around, you're getting things that, you know, we certainly have a lot of homeless, we could use homeless shelters, we could use a lot of this stuff. I'm all for transit, but I'm just thinking about the investment that's a lot of money that, you know, could be used. And we want to enhance the property values, we want to give money to our current taxpayers on Main Street and whatnot. So I'm all for the transit thing, but I'm just wanting to make sure we're not just big grand as we can be because there's just a lot of money to be had.
Sure.
But I'm glad it's moving ahead.
Fine, well taken. Anybody else that would like to speak on the Twenty-Seven Market Street Revitalization Project? No? Okay, with that, then we will close that particular public hearing and move on to a public hearing for procedures for member, the video conferencing pursuant to Public Officers Law Section One Oh Three Dash A. I wonder if anybody's here. AJ, yes?
I'm on the road with us. Will this affect commissions or committees with the City of Oneonta?
I'll let Terry speak to it.
No, this is only for the council and the council committees.
Okay. And the next question is, is this a state, county, or municipal law?
Public Officers Law is a state law, New York State.
Okay. And the third question with that is, this might sound like the stupidest question that I've ever have asked, but is there a possibility that our beloved state senator or state assemblyman could add an addendum that includes, you know, committees or commissions so that...
I can't speak for all the elected officials.
Okay.
But we've got it on the record here.
Okay, good.
So thank you very much, AJ.
All right.
Nobody else on this element of the public hearing, so we will close that. And although I would suspect that you're here to talk about the basketball court?
Yes.
Yes.
And that resides at the very end of our agenda, but this is the opportunity for folks to speak. And so I just want to give you an opportunity so that it informs the conversation we have a little bit later on, so.
The name is Jose Medina. I live on Thirty Union Street. Anything else that I have to say besides that?
Okay.
And I'm Rob in Medina, and I live on Thirty Union Street as well. And I just want to kind of give the background is that two years ago, the tennis court in the lower park, a third of the tennis court was converted to a basketball court, which unfortunately abuts the property of about six homes. And we addressed, a number of us came to a common council meeting in June two thousand twenty to express our concerns about the potential noise and disruption this would have with the neighborhood. Unfortunately, our worst, well, so the common council took this into consideration and decided to designate it as a family play space. And rules were posted about no noise, appropriate language, be respectful of the neighbors and so forth. Unfortunately, our worst fears were realized. And it's just, you know, there's loud music, there's yelling, shouting, profanity. And we brought our concerns to the Parks and Rec Committee about this. And basically, we were told to call the police. We can see calling the police for loud music and so forth. But the nature of the game is young people, they're having fun, they're yelling, they're shouting, and unfortunately, they use bad language. To call the police for something, for these young people having fun, just seems laughable. So we circulated a petition among everyone on the street. We knocked on everybody's door. We got over sixty-one people that signed a petition recommending that the tennis courts, that the basketball court be converted to something else, be relocated.
That's basically it. We lived there for thirty-two years. The first thirty-one years, in my hand, I can count the times that I experienced music. In those days, we called them boomboxes. Had they bring in something as a speaker, that's a Bluetooth.
Amplifies.
Amplified the sound. I never went to tell them to stop it. They're not supposed to do skateboarding, but that's what they would do, skateboarding the music. It would be five times in thirty-one years. The last year, easily four to five times a week, I would have to go and say to somebody, look, guys, this music is too loud. And for the most part, they would listen and they would lower it. But it is contentious. It's tense when you approach somebody that, well, why do I have to do this? I don't want to do it. And I said, well, then I'm going to have to call the police. Oh, okay. And then they would turn it down. So that was the thing, the tranquility of our background house.
We also have neighbors with young children. And our next-door neighbor with a four-year-old boy, the mom said, I can't let him play outside because he's acquired the F-word. And the only place he learned this word was from the crowds playing in the tennis court, in the basketball court. It's just not fair that we can't let our children outside and play with good clean fun.
It looks like. And basically, you can see the basketball court right there, right out of our window. We showed you those pictures already. You look out of our window, there is a basketball court right in our back camera. So that's what we see. And I don't know, should I tell you the next, the next thing is... And this, we recorded this from our deck. That's how mad it is, from our deck. They lowered it while we were confronting them. But it's still something that we have to go and do. So that's basically.
And as far as a petition, over sixty-one people signed the petition. And, yeah.
So this is...
And we've considered moving. We're so upset about it.
We love you, yeah.
And another neighbor had confided to me that they were considering moving too, that it was not bad.
This is going to be coming up, I think it's, I was just checking, I think it's item number eleven on the agenda. So it'll be a while, but this will be discussed here at council. And of course, it's archived and put on YouTube. I don't know that, you know, that you people watch that there as well. You're also obviously welcome to stay.
No, we just wanted to present our...
Really appreciate the input. And the audiovisual aids actually, I was wondering when you opened it up that they were actually...
I know, right? It's my, the teacher or me?
Yeah. All right, so again, thank you.
Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on now to a report, unless there's anybody else that has anything.
What a freaking rule. I was going to talk to you guys about the crosswalk indicators slash buttons that are in front of Main Street Baptist Church and the corner of Main and Maple Streets by the Center Street, Deloitte. I've used them, and they've worked sporadically. I don't know what's going on with them, whether it's a technical glitch or a technical issue, but whenever I've pressed it, it's either the indicator lights want to work, and when they do want to work, great. When they don't, I more or less have to conduct traffic, and it's a bit of a pain in the teeth.
We don't want to do that. We will, I'm sure somebody will want to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
And...
So Andrew, just on something like that, DPS has within the website the ability for you as a resident to list your concerns. And that way, instead of waiting until common council meets?
Oh, okay.
You can actually do it at the moment that it's happening, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, that's a brilliant suggestion, actually. So thank you for that. Yeah, there's an awful lot of ways for folks to be communicated to the city. If you see something that you feel needs to be reported, please, we have the ability to do that. And that goes for safety and security issues as well as just, you know, things that seem, you know, a little off. So thank you very much. Good. Anybody else? And AJ, you're done.
Yes, I'm done.
All right. Anybody else? All right, in that case, we will then move on to our health officers report. That ends our...
It'll be brief, but I missed you guys. So it's been two months, August second since my last report. Not a lot of new stuff. We're still technically in a pandemic. But as you can see worldwide, the numbers are trending downward, both in terms of confirmed cases and deaths, although it's been over six-point-five million deaths from COVID in the last two and a half years. Next slide. Here's a United States Epi curve, and you can see again a trending down. But as you note in the text on the side, that here in the northeastern states and in some of the western states, that trend is not as consistent. So a little, excuse me, because I just had COVID, a little concerned about, you know, we're coming into the fall season, the cold weather, the flu season, whether we'll see the increase again. But overall, again, two months ago, we were at a hundred and twenty thousand cases per day average. It's down to forty-six. So trending downward nationwide. The deaths have really not trended downward quite so much, four to five hundred a day, still significant. Next slide. New York State, again, kind of even in the last couple of months. We're just at this steady level, both in terms of cases and deaths. Next slide. Here we have Atsigo County, and we are even more not going down. Today, the county reported a eight-point-seven percent positivity, which is about where it was two months ago at nine-point-two percent. But the number of cases per hundred thousand has increased. None of the data is perfect. We know, we're not knowing about all the cases. The denominator changes by the amount of testing that's done, and negative home tests don't get reported anymore. So, but the best data we have tells us that we're still having significant community transmission of COVID. Antidoteally, I think we all know people that have recently had COVID. Our vaccination rate in the county has stated about the same, at sixty-three percent, but the booster percentage has gone up a bit. Next slide. Another look at the county metrics. And I was really happy to see the door, the sign on the door, we know we're at medium. Two months ago, we were at low. This is the community level, which takes into account not just the number of cases per hundred thousand, but also our hospital capacity. It's meant to guide us as a community and as individuals in terms of what protections we may want to take or not take. At this level, masking is recommended on public transportation. I think that the state's not going to come back with a mandate. We, the city, aren't going to come back with a mandate. But that just an awareness, I think, as a community that at levels that seem to be greater than they were a couple of months ago, the CDC does encourage people to wear masks on public transportation. Next slide. This is our wastewater. We continue to have high to substantial, high substantial amounts of COVID-nineteen mRNA in our wastewater, and the trend is increasing. I think if anything, again, our data in terms of cases and positivity is not perfect, but we know from our wastewater that there is still COVID here in the community. Next slide. Variants, the BA four and BA five continue to be the dominant variants. They've been here since July. Now there's a little bit. That red up on top is BA four-point-six. It's a subvariant of BA four. Like the other subvariants, we think it may be a little more transmissible. We don't know yet whether it causes greater illness. And we're hoping that our newer vaccines will be as effective against this subvariant. The next slide is just the region one, no, region two, excuse me, of which New York is a part. And again, very much still BA five dominant. Next slide. So this came up last week, and I go, what? But in case any of you saw this, the CDC did publicize that guidance has changed for healthcare settings, both in terms of mask use and in terms of requiring employees to be vaccinated. So that, some of this, I think, is just to maintain healthcare capacity. But if you really look at the fine print of all of this guidance, well, first of all, New York State still has a mandate in healthcare settings, correctional facilities and congregate care settings. There's no, there's been no movement, as far as I know, from the governor to change that in any way. But if you look at the fine print of this guidance, it's basing this on community transmission and not community level. So next slide. We are still at high community transmission. And I find it a little confusing, but this is the metric by which the CDC is telling us that healthcare systems should make choices in terms of recommending mask use. So given that we're high, and the majority of counties in this country are still high by this metric, which is the number of cases per hundred thousand population, our healthcare setting shouldn't be going to the newer guidance. Yes?
Do you know the potential logic? Could you, I don't want to put words in the administration's mouth. Is there a logic?
I think it's to maintain capacity of our healthcare settings, because a lot of the language has to do with requirements for vaccination for employees. And, yeah, I think that's my presumption. But if anyone knows anything more about that, I was really surprised when I saw that. I go, what? And the governor did have a press conference yesterday that didn't address this at all. I talked to Heidi from the Health Department. I go, do you think New York State's going to follow this? She said that she didn't know. And maybe it's on nobody else's radar. It just was on mine, and I found it very curious. Because we're still seeing outbreaks in our nursing homes locally in the last couple of months. And as a healthcare provider, I wouldn't want to be working in a hospital where my colleagues weren't wearing masks. Next slide. So what's new since our last meeting in early September? You probably all know that the FDA and then the CDC all finally approved the new bivalent booster, which has basically replaced all the boosters. So now if you go to get a booster, it will be this bivalent. By bivalent, we mean part of it contains protection against the original strains, but the other half was specifically designed to cover the BA four and BA five subvariants of Omicron. So we think it's a better booster, and it is recommended for the Moderna is approved and recommended for those over eighteen and those over twelve, the Pfizer. The official recommendation is any, any of those people who qualify age-wise can get it two months after their last booster. It's not approved as a primary vaccine. And for those of us who have recently had COVID, you can get it soon after you've recovered, but it, but most of the guidance I've been looking at says probably best to wait two to three months, just because you're pretty well protected and you might want that protection later on. As we move into the flu season, the official guidance says these vaccines can be co-administered. That's mostly, I think, for convenience and getting people vaccinated. They don't have to be co-administered. But flu season is coming up, and I don't know, have we had our city clinics yet?
About, little less than two weeks.
Yeah, the end of October is optimal, so that's the best time. And that's about all I have. Monkeypox has kind of gone away, or going away. We still have had no cases in Atsigo County. There are some vaccines available in Broom and Delaware, but hopefully, knock on wood, it won't be as much of a worry as we had feared. In terms of polio, there are four downstate counties that have had significant spread noted in the wastewater. So there's a real push to get young kids vaccinated in those counties. And we're seeing at the college, you know, if kids from those counties have symptoms suggestive of polio, there is now testing available. So hopefully, that won't also be a thing. Now, any questions? Scott?
If somebody had COVID, how quick could, and they just got over, how quick could they get the flu shot? Should they get the flu shot?
That's a really good question. I think soon. There's nothing about having recent COVID that will impair your ability to mount immune response to the flu shot. I mean, probably if you're not feeling so great, you might want to wait another week or two, because again, end of October is an optimal window. But yeah, there's nothing about getting the flu shot, having recently had COVID, that I'm aware of.
Any other questions?
Be well, maybe I won't have to come back. We'll see. But yeah, my message is it's definitely still here. We have tools now. Masks are still very appropriate. I'm not wearing mine tonight because I just recovered myself, so. But I think there's still absolutely a role for wearing masks, and it's come down to mostly individual choice, which I guess is okay, but...
It is so nice to see the bottom of your face.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. George, for continuing to update us. It's really easy to try to live without this, or try to, but it is still here, so thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to boards and commission reports, and we'll start with our Commission on Community Blazes and Human Rights. And look as soon as you've got the board.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. The commission met, I believe it was September twenty-second, which is a Thursday. The main topics of discussion were, there are two vacancies on the commission. So if anyone's interested, I'm sure the mayor's looking at some point at those spots. We also are doing rolling, not admissions, but submissions for Trailblazer Award. So if anybody knows any women in the city that have really contributed to the city in any way, it can be any number of ways. Please check out the commission's website to see how you can apply, or submit, rather, a application. And we are also hoping to start up with workshops again in 2023, and are currently looking for more spaces to, to hold those. And that was the new business, continuing discussion on how the city can, can look to ways to be more inclusive, including looking at our logo and some of our monuments and things like that, that were also discussed.
Very good. Anybody have any questions, comments for Lou? I see you know, so thank you. And then moving on to our Parks and Recreation Commission, you can use the party.
Sure. So Parks and Rec met yesterday. We had first a presentation, kind of, a guest, David Kropf from Destination Oneonta, who wanted to talk about recent events in the park. So he just gave us kind of an overview. There was this, going to Bloom Fest, which was a great success. He thinks that there were a thousand to fifteen hundred people in the park over the course of the two days. The way he calculated that is that they had to do a waiver for the bounce houses, that all the kids, and about three hundred kids were assigned into the bounce houses. So just kind of extrapolating, because kids generally have parents. So, and then he went on to Harvest Fest. It was cold, but the turnout was okay. One thing that was kind of new this year, or is definitely new, was that they offered laser tag, which was like a free interactive event. There was one complaint about that, but generally, that was really well received. So he mentioned, just, you know, sort of rethinking that, taking that complaint. He mentioned that the electricity in the park, the recent upgrades that we did, were able to handle all the vendors' power needs. So that's great. And he had gotten, so they don't organize a Grand and Glorious Garage now, but he had gotten some feedback from some of the vendors that had done both events, that there was some more, that having it in the park was generally good, and that there was sort of a more relaxed feel to the event versus having it on Main Street. Their next event is the Downtown Trick or Treat, which is on Halloween, October thirty-first, in the afternoon. And they're looking at ways to partner with the City Moore, the Parks Department specifically, doing some website event crossposting, and trying to potentially sponsor more movie nights, which we had in the summer, and that was pretty successful, so. Parks Administrator Lanting gave a parks report, which is always very comprehensive. The Liberty Elm trees have arrived, and I think have already been planted. The goal with those in the park was to replace trees that have come down during storms. Or, I know, I think she had mentioned that there was, I can't remember the number, but maybe just one tree in the dog park, where there are tons of really great existing trees, but they're all on the Riverside. So getting some younger trees in there to replace those as they age. She met with the folks who had the Out of the Darkness Walk, which was the event, if you guys remember, that ended up getting, having some confusion with their permit to operate in the park, and they did it during a Saturday soccer thing, and it was like mildly chaotic. So, yeah, out of that conversation, Parks is really trying to partner and support public safety. If you guys remember, they're trying to keep events limited to inside the park, to limit, like, street closures and stuff like that. So Parks Department specifically, when she's working with people who want to have an event in the park, is trying to support that. And also Greg has come up with a five-k loop that stays inside Neowah. So we took a look at that last night as well. There's been some discussion about trail safety. Lou has met with Mike Maven, I think she said, who's the head of the Oneonta Trail Association? Okay, great. They are, they're just talking about ways to better partner, have better communication, to make the trails safer, better marked, et cetera. Boat season has started. Rifle season starts November nineteenth, so keep that in mind, not when you're in the city parks, but maybe when you're out on the trails. The Community Garden had a sold-out season, and I know we're all looking at ways that maybe we can expand that in the future. Oh, and then the most fun thing that we discussed is that the Large Pavilion has had a couple of rentals since September that have, I wrote Don wrong, but they, they just, the people who rented the pavilion left it in, like, total disorder and garbage and stuff. So the committee discussed some possibilities for some accountability around that for the permit holders, and that'll probably be coming forward to click at some point. That's it.
I just wanted to, I'm really glad to wrap the last one. Actually, I got a call about it from our assistant.
Oh, good.
So thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
Okay. Just a thing to point out with the five Ks. I know we had talked about, with the police chief, about trying to make five Ks in the park. And so something, and at the time, I said, this is great. And then I got home, and I realized, it's like, wait a second, we have a lot of our races, well, not a lot, but occasionally, we have wheelchair racers that show up to the five Ks. And depending on what we do in the park, they may or may not be able to participate. So while I still think we should try to push for the park, I don't think we should have a goal of pushing every single race in the park, because then we would exclude another segment of the community.
Yeah.
I think we just need to keep that in mind, that's all.
I'm going to write that down.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Scott?
I got, got one for Mark and Katie at the same time. Talking about trees. When we get to the trees that we plant throughout the city, would it be possible, maybe to look at some of the trees that we take down the park from storm damage and disease and stuff, and maybe use some of those to replenish some of the trees? We have younger ones in the park to grow?
That's what they did.
Is that what they did? Because I know that there were still a bunch that went out through the city.
That's, that's the report that we got from Lou, was that, and actually, don't, oh, do I have the agenda right here? Because she might have put a number for how many were planted.
Yeah, I think that was said to everybody.
Twenty in the parks?
Oh, six.
Six in Neowah. Yeah, yes, that's right. Yeah, and so the places that they were planted were strategically chosen to replace trees that had been down in the storms.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, totally.
Any other questions or comments or cases? All right, so I've got, I've got two.
Oh.
One is the Grand Glorious, I, it was a wonderful, they did a nice job. And, and the park just gives you, you know, it's a very different kind of ambiance than you have on Main Street. However, I walked around and connected with all of the many of the merchants, if not all. And asked them, it was about two-thirty in the afternoon, so at this point, they'd had an opportunity to experience most of their day. And I asked them how their day went. And they were just like, they all went, oh, this has been great. And I said, but compared to, you know, if you've done it in the past on Main Street, has there been a difference? And almost every single one said, oh, my God, on Main Street is so much better. I made so much more money on Main Street. So, so that's a, that's a concern that I think just needs to be addressed.
Sure. And maybe it's worth, you know, talking to the organizers?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. I just, I just want to get that, as, as your report had indicated, otherwise, I just want to get, you know, that out there, so that, you know, that's on the record. The other thing is, again, really excellent job with the harvest program. Really excellent job. I heard from so many people that they did not know about it, you know, until after the fact I had posted something around two, two-thirty in the afternoon, saying this is going to run a half a month now. It's like, oh, we don't know what's going on. So it's just, there's a lot that Destination Oneonta is trying to do, and it's just one of those things that we kind of, kind of look at. Are we getting enough? I mean, we, we know that there is a, an event in Deli, I guess, it's, you know, you know, October eighth. You know, we see it on the signs up and down, but, you know, did we, do we know anything's going on necessarily in the Park? So it's just another, just a, I just want to bring that up, so that's also kind of good out there. Okay? Great. Anybody else have anything more? If not, then we'll move on to our committee reports. Thank you very much. Move on to our committee reports, Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. We met September twenty-seventh at five-thirty in Council Chambers. We had, we covered, four out of five topics. If you guys were watching the video, we talked about alleyway expansion, extensions, extension, cleaning up, whatever. So, yeah, we're now a little bit, alleyway north and south, or east or west.
It's all on the north side.
Right, it's all on the north side, so we're going to go east and west with it. But afterwards, we met and walked the alleyways. And so we're just exploring the idea of what could happen in the alleyways for the businesses. What we're hearing from property owners is that the back of their buildings could be utilized if we cleaned up the alleyways, allowed it to be attractive, to get visitors, maybe a walk path could be designed. There's just a bunch of ideas that are kind of flowing through that right now. So for economic development, we're looking at is, how can a business get an ROI off of whatever investment they put to the side of the building, whether it's just painting it with some lights, sharing those expenses with their neighbors. We talked about garbage cleanup, and we have codes, code enforcement officers here tonight, that is already in place for screening the garbage dumpsters. So we're just looking at, what is it we can do as a, as a committee to help move that idea forward. Our city attorney was also present, and he explained to us what would be the next legal step to go through. So it's kind of a slow process. Also, Julie, our community developer, she told the committee what's on the, on the sheet for the next couple of years, how she's maneuvering through for public monies. So it was, it was a good discussion overall. We also talked about the, what would be the city's role in building out infrastructure for development. We do have parcels that could be developed, but as you know, putting in streets, curbs, sidewalks gets a little expensive, and then partnering with our utility companies. So that is an open discussion, again, just trying to figure it out, because we do have the ability, the mayor, and I'm sure the rest of us want to bring in new residents into our community, but housing, housing is looking at this also, how, how we do that. So if the Housing Commission and some of the subcommittees come up with ideas of, what would be your housing, what type of housing is it? I'm sure it's going to be a mixture of different types of housing. Where will that be? And then what type of infrastructure is going to need to be built out? So we just want to be ahead of the curve and have those discussions about infrastructure built out. One of the property owners slash downtown business owners approached me and felt that the bus schedule was having a negative impact on his business, or their business. And I raised that question, and Greg and other city staff members said that we are still currently providing a bus schedule on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that runs until, I believe it was three a.m. or seven a.m. that I took. So, not quite sure if that's impacting their business, but it was good to get an answer from city staff. Marketing, the mayor's asking our committee to take over marketing for welcoming back students and baseball families, who recognizes that the EC is kind of busy with its slate, and so that we're looking at a subcommittee for, for this endeavor, which would need to be up and running here in the next couple of months, given the fact that, like, baseball families come back relatively soon. Do you want to put out there, the one topic that we didn't talk about was, currently, the way we look at this is that properties that don't pay school taxes or property taxes, the county makes this whole every single year, and we're going to talk about the idea, if the city was to hold onto those properties and have an auction themselves, then would that help out our housing needs? Meaning, can an LDC look at that as an opportunity? So that's something we're going to talk about at our next meeting. And that's it.
Questions, Mark?
Len, the alleyways, are they described, or are they public right of ways?
So, not necessarily, but as our lawyer pointed out, it would be a combination of having the property owners sign that over to us. So it's, at, at this point, it's private property, and we would need to get access through the public channels.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I see none. Great. Thank you very much. All right, moving on then to our Finance and Human Resources Committee, and before a change of pace, Len?
Actually, not the day before. That's September twenty-sixth at six p.m. At this point, I do want to just kind of raise the fact that County Councilmember John Rafter is doing well, and I talked to him earlier today, and it was good to hear his voice, and so I look forward to working with John in the near future, when he gets back, sort of fully recovered. So if John, you're home watching, we, we missed him. So we had multiple items for, for our agenda. The first one was Restore New York Grant application, which is on our agenda tonight. And what you're reading is exactly what was presented. We'd just like to take this opportunity, either Greg or Julie, because there's probably a question about the four million dollars, if we could just give an explanation of that portion of it?
Sure, we're applying for, it's going to be probably closer to fifteen million dollar total project cost. We'll be applying for probably around eleven and a half million through the Restoring New York program, between their regular program and as a special project. And the proposed developer would provide the local match, the entire match.
Right. So at this point, city taxpayers would not be on the hook for any portion of this, is that correct?
Not of the grant and the local match for the grant. There would be some discussion about the purchasing the site and all of that, but, I don't know. So you want to?
I think you said it earlier, as far as the grant goes, the match, there's no cash match required from the city.
Right.
Right. Of course, we already, we already, you said we already purchased it.
Right.
Okay. We also talked about the video, oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. Question about, about the four million dollars. I understand it's to be provided by the developer. I'm looking at the motion, the way it's written, the developer, do we know who the developer is? Or is this a developer?
Yeah, the proposed developer has, has said we can publicize his name, is Chip Clugo.
Okay.
But all of that would be, you know, dependent on getting the grant, and then we go from there, negotiating the site and everything. The one thing about it, too, is we have a Restore New York grant, a small one, well, small, sorry, it's just under half a million dollars. If we get this new funding, we would have to return that, so this would replace that. But it should be a lot more if we get it.
No, I guess you can't get me to ask questions. So if I turn back over a half a million dollars, isn't that something that we could use on another project, say, like the theater?
No, it cannot. No, it is, we are, we are under instructions from ESD, Empire State Development, for that money has to be used at twenty-seven Market Street. If we're not going to use it at twenty-seven Market Street, and we get this new funding, which is the same Restore New York program, just a new round. uh, which is the same Restore New York program, just a new round, we would have to return it. We can't have both and we can't use it for any other site. We checked on that a few years ago when things were stalled on us being able to purchase that site. We were trying to get it broken most to use it elsewhere and we cannot.
Thank you for the clarity.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, are you all?
Well, also, um, there was the video conferencing, which, um, our city clerk, Carrie Harrington, took the lead on this along with our city attorney. And before you is the document, the resolution we're going to forward with. I'm sure she had many sleepless nights putting this together, so thank you Carrie for doing that, appreciate it. Um, also in our agenda is the tree trimming, bid award. We did talk about the T P W residence requirement. We did table the ARCA funds and I also believe Dave, your committee, or Mark, your committee is talking about it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that one.
I think we have our homework, right? That was a subject matter that we have our homework and that we're going to come back and whether we're agreeing with everything on the list as is or are we coming up with new items? How did you guys make out?
We, well, we didn't get a chance to talk about it that long. And so I was curious what ended up happening in your committee. And so now I'm wondering, do we want to have it put on a discussion agenda for the full council to talk about? If we've both discussed it, it'll be briefly in ours, um, we've discussed it in two separate groups.
Right.
Good.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think that you probably better, more efficient to get all our ideas out of the table at the same time.
Yeah.
And kind of find out where we're all at. So maybe in a month or so, we can.
Next week. Yeah, I guess you work it on the agenda.
The next council meeting?
Next one.
Also, there was a five, five thousand dollar donation strictly for the Swart Wilcox. We have the charging stations, which I guess Judy secured through public money of three hundred thousand dollars, but no match from the city for charging stations. And city staff are kind of going through locations of where they're gonna put.
No, we're applying for it.
Oh, you're applying for it?
Yeah, at the parking garage. And that was submitted on Friday. We're gonna last minute deadline to get it in.
Good, um, Mark, I thought you, as you're heading up.
He hit it at the end. I was really curious about that particular project, so I can't wait to hear more about the proposal as we move forward. Hopefully we get it.
All right, with that, unless there are any other questions or comments for Len, we'll move on to Councilmember Rissberger and Quality of Life and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you. We met on the September twenty sixth and I feel like half of what's on my agenda, we've already talked about. First was Wilbur Park Basketball Court. I just want to thank the Medina's for coming in and giving their opinion about what they've seen in the backyard. They did the same thing for our committee. They said originally the basketball court was place based two years ago where signs were posted for use, please use appropriate language and no loud music. Since then, there's been some changeover. Personally, I feel like it was kind of a rapid changeover or sudden change back to playing basketball. But, um, I just wanted, uh, literally everything they said tonight, I have on my, um, my agenda here. And then we'll be talking about this later in tonight, so I won't go any further than that. Wilbur Park Gate by the S curve. A member of the community is, uh, has some concerns about this because we've had a sawed horse and chain there. This is, as you're going down the S curve, you see the path into the park. And it, they felt it looked sloppy and it, it really does look sloppy. So they would like to donate funds for, to, to put in a proper gate. And, um, the city may look into paving an area from the park path and the bridge also. So Greg's gonna price it out, bring it back to the council and the mayor is gonna be contacting the donor, I believe. Then we had, we had a discussion about sustainable purchasing initiative. And this is something that, um, we're gonna, after some much back and forth discussing, we decided to add it to the yearly purchasing policy. This is where, if possible, we will be able, we will try to keep our purchases to green purchases. And we're gonna have to take each instance on its own merit to see whether it's possible to do, but we're gonna at least strive to do that as best as we're able to. E Street Trail Development, this is the additional bike trail that's in process on Upper E Street. And Councilman Davies has been working and having, having conversations with the trail building company that includes a SUNY alumni. This group seeks out grants for different development. And Councilman Davies is gonna be setting up a meeting with them this fall and we'll let them walk the property. They'd like to look and make recommendations on where the trail should go. The Susquehanna Greenway Group is also going to be involved as there is, they want to be involved with the flora and fauna in the area because we obviously don't want to disrupt some stuff that doesn't need to be or should be disrupted. Then we had a discussion about the ARCA funds. So this is where, just to bring everybody up to speed, is last year we had seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars that was originally committed to the parks projects. Two of those projects were completed, the Electric in Neo York Park and the new trail pavement. One thing that was suggested strongly and I agree with is we should probably look to add ARCA signs to project locations, just to state where the money and the funding came from, I think would be nice to do. But then on the, the other items that were on the list, I was going through them in my own opinion, um, and I brought this up with the committee, is I think there's some areas that we can probably immediately agree on and then there's others that need more discussion. And then outside of that, we have to discuss what we're gonna do with the second half of the ARCA funds as well. So, um, I have here that I was adding it to the Quality of Life meeting for this month, but we'll have our council meeting before that happens. So hopefully we, we can have something out and at least get ourselves a path to the next council meeting for that. Lastly was, uh, citywide speed limit reduction. There was recent legislation assigned at the state level that gives us the ability to reduce, reduce the speed limit to as low as twenty five miles per hour in the city. What we need to do is an engineering study and we could, Greg says, we could probably do this in-house to see what is appropriate in various parts of the city, but a lot of the data we may already have. So either way, this is something that could take several months to a year to compile all the data. And, um, then when that's done, we'll bring the recommendation back to the committee for further discussion. So Luke's got a question.
Yeah, so does that include Route seven, you know, the state route?
I don't believe it would. Would it?
Uh, so except for Main Street from the Susquehanna, exit fourteen to Chestnut Street, that is a state owned road. Everything else, even, even where it's designated as Route seven, twenty three on Chestnut Street and East End Main Street, that's actually a city owned road. It's called a state tour road, still designated, fortunately, so it's under our control.
Okay.
Could be those, but.
Good question.
And yes, you did say twenty five is the lowest?
Right.
So back to what Luke just mentioned, it's always seemed more appropriate for me that Main Street be a little bit lower. Makes sense to me too. So I think, I think we're gonna have to look at various areas of the city and see what would work and what wouldn't work necessarily. But that's where, and then of course Chestnut Street, um, we're still having speeding. I think it was just, uh, the whole, the whole group was just clocked or analyzed and top speed was eighty three miles an hour.
On Chestnut Street?
On Chestnut Street and the average, average speed was thirty eight, that's the average speed. So I'm still in, um, need of some help from the council to, uh, to figure out ways of slowing down the traffic. And Nick Steiner is busier than ever, so I'd rather be proactive than reactive. And that's a problem I'll have to get.
That's a hot area. Good, um, any other, yes?
Yeah, I did, um, have one comment regarding the Wilbur Park Gate. And, um, I thought that, well, it's wonderful that there's a donor who wants to pay for a gate that also may be a good, um, opportunity for them to use the, um, an O C I fund or the O C I grant. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oneonta Community Initiative Grants. From those small grants, they're like the community grants that are available through the city.
Chances are though, this gate is going to be well over that amount.
It probably would be, but maybe even if it's partially funded or even if they wanted to put some flowers around it, like that might be, you know, a nice way to use it and, I don't know, a good way to promote City of Oneonta involvement as well.
Well, I think the first thing that's gonna happen is we gotta have it priced out and then we go from there and see what's gonna cost. Because I think we, we all agreed that we didn't want something that looked like a, how did you put it, a cattle, a cattle gate? I was hoping we would have something that matches the other gates that have been put throughout the park. That would make most sense.
I think the donor would too.
And so?
Any other questions or comments? Uh, I, I didn't get a chance to watch the quick meeting, but I, I was wondering, um, the, the trail, is there still the plan to have a pull off trailhead, um, as that E Street hiking, biking trails are, are looked at? So that you're not parking right on a, on, on the road there?
I think we had originally.
I think we determined there was room there.
Yeah, we had looked at some room. I don't think we've gotten as far as saying definitely this is gonna be the site. And there was a couple of different options, really trying to look at the overall area and begin to think about purposely building some trails there. The idea of using this particular company is that they also can get grants to be able to supplement their work, if you will, and, and it'd be nice to have a real professionally developed piece of trail system there.
Well, I know they did, it does eighty three on Chestnut, also does eighty three going up, uh, E Streets. So around that curve, so it'd be nice to be able to have that pull off anyway. So good, all right, well, uh, if there are no more questions or comments, thank you very much to all. And we'll move on to the City Administrator's Report and you're gonna take a flyer on that, um, this week, right? And the mayor's remarks, um, there you go. So moving along to the Consent Agenda. I didn't get it complained with.
That was beautiful.
All right, so moving along to the Consent Agenda. So I'm, I'm reading speeches from all the colleges and I say, you know, no one complains, my speeches are too short, is it? All right, Consent Agenda, Approval of the Minutes, Motion that the Common Council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held September twentieth, twenty twenty two. Motion number two, motion that the Common Council approves warrants totaling three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and, three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty eight cents, and that the same be placed on the Director of Finance's desk for payment as presented. Motion number three, that the Common Council approves the following resolution. Whereas the City of Oneonta is applying for twelve thousand dollars in financial assistance through. I'm sorry? Oh, twelve million. It does make a difference. We'll take it from the top. Whereas the city is applying for twelve million dollars in financial assistance through the Restore New York Communities Initiative Round Six Municipal Grant Program for the twenty seven Market Street Rehabilitation Project for the demolition and reconstruction of the property at twenty seven Market Street, Oneonta, New York, one three eight two zero. And whereas the proposed project is consistent with the City of Oneonta's local revitalization plan. And whereas the proposed project costs sixteen million dollars and financing is appropriate for the specific project. And whereas the project facilitates effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources. And whereas the project develops and enhances infrastructure and/or other facilities in a manner that will be, that will attract, create and sustain employment opportunities where applicable. And whereas the program requires a ten percent local match and the entire match of four million dollars is provided by the developer. Now therefore be resolved that Mark Drannick, Mayor of the City of Oneonta, hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funds from the Restore New York Communities Initiative Round Six Municipal Grant Program for the twenty seven Market Street Rehabilitation Project for the demolition and reconstruction of the property at twenty seven Market Street, Oneonta, New York, one three eight two zero. And upon approval of said request to enter into and execute a project agreement with the state for such financial assistance to the City of Oneonta. And that the Common Council further, this, further authorizes the mayor to take any action or sign any additional documents necessary on behalf of the city and to order any necessary budget amendments and transfers and to take any actions and to provide any additional information that might be required to implement the proposed program upon approval from the state, subject to review by the city attorney. Moving on to motion four. That the Common Council approves the following resolution. Whereas the City of Oneonta plans to apply for up to three hundred thousand dollars in financial assistance from the twenty twenty two Municipal Zero Emission Vehicle Z E V Infrastructure Grant Program administered by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And whereas the application proposes funding to assist in the installation of zero emission vehicle infrastructure in the city's parking garage located at two dash ten Chestnut Street. And whereas the program is located in a disadvantaged community and thus the program requires no local match on behalf of the city. Now therefore be it resolved that Mark Drannick, Mayor of the City of Oneonta, hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funds from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation through his twenty twenty two Municipal Zero Emission Vehicle Z E V Infrastructure Grant Program. And upon approval of said request to enter into and execute a project agreement with the state for such financial assistance through the City of Oneonta. And that the Common Council further authorizes the mayor to take any actions or sign any additional documents necessary on behalf of the city to order any necessary budget amendments and transfers and to take any actions and to provide any additional information that might be required to implement the proposed programs upon approval from the state, subject to review by the city attorney. Motion number five, that the Common Council approves the purchasing agent's recommendation to award the bid for the twenty twenty two tree removal and maintenance to the lowest responsive bidder, Ryan Karst Crane and Tree Service, Oneida, New York, in the amount of thirty two thousand, one hundred and seventy five dollars. Motion number six, that the Common Council authorizes the Director of Finance to accept a gift in the amount of five thousand dollars from an anonymous donor to be restricted for the Swart Wilcox Fund and to authorize any necessary budget amendments from, for said acceptance. Motion number seven, that the Common Council accepts the reports of the city's independent auditor, Ballam, Chee Dee, Tarani and Company Certified Public Accountants, B S T, Albany, New York, on the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended December thirty first, twenty twenty one. These reports include an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the city and the required federal compliance single audit reports. The single audit reports contain no findings. General, all the consent is motion number eight, that the Common Council adopts the following resolution. Resolution that the Common Council, the City of Oneonta, New York, whereas by passing chapter fifty six of the laws of twenty twenty two, the New York State Legislature amended section one oh three of the Open Meetings Law. And whereas chapter fifty six adds section one zero three dash A of the Open Meetings Law permitting local public bodies to authorize their members to attend meetings by video conferencing under extraordinary circumstances. And whereas section one oh three dash A two A requires local public bodies to adopt a resolution following a public hearing, authorizing the limited use of video conferencing under such circumstance. And whereas section one oh three dash A two allows for hybrid meetings by requiring that a minimum number of members are present to fulfill the public body's quorum requirement in the same physical location or locations where the public can attend. And whereas section one oh three dash two C requires that members be physically present at any such meeting unless such members unable to be physically present at any such meeting location due to extraordinary circumstances, including disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the members' physical attendance at such meeting. And whereas in the accordance with section one oh three dash A two D, any members attending by video conference must, except during executive sessions, be heard, seen and identified while the meeting is being conducted, including but not limited to any motions, proposals, resolutions and any other matter formally discussed or voted upon. And whereas section one oh and whereas section one oh three dash A two G requires that any meeting where a member attends by videoconference be recorded, posted, or linked to the City of O'Neanta's webpage within five business days and transcribed upon request, and whereas section one oh three dash A two H requires that members of the public be permitted to participate, if authorized, in any meeting by videoconference. When a member attends by videoconference, now therefore be it resolved that the City of O'Neanta Common Council authorizes its members who experience an extraordinary circumstance as described above and further defined by any rules or written procedures later adopted to attend meetings by videoconference. I, as long as the quorum of the members attend in person at the designated public meeting location, City Hall, Common Council Chambers, three fifty-eight Main Street, O'Neanta, New York, or two, as, no, live, as long as the members can be seen, heard, and identified while the open portion of the meeting is being conducted by all members of the public and the public body, and three lowercase i's, as the otherwise permitted under chapter fifty-six of the law of, laws of Twenty-Two Twenty-Two, and be it further resolved that the City of O'Neanta Common Council shall adopt the written procedures further governing its use of videoconferencing by its members in compliance with chapter fifty-six of the laws of Twenty-Two Twenty-Two. And that ends the consent agenda. Are there any items that one might wish? Luke, you would?
One and eight please.
Say it once.
One and eight.
One and eight. Any others to be removed? Okay, do I have a motion to, Len, followed by Mark? And, uh, with that, if they're supposed to pull rule.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Falco?
Aye.
Alright, now with that, we'll move to motion number one, and Luke, as you pulled that. Uh, do we have a motion?
Some of them.
Very good, Emily, followed by Len, getting the hang of this. Go ahead.
Uh, real quick, I just, uh, I was asked at this meeting, so I will be, um, abstaining, I was gonna say recusing, abstaining from this motion.
Okay. Anything else on this? If not, no discussion, then click, call a rule.
Councilmember Murphy?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Falco?
Aye.
Okay, now we move to motion number eight, that's also Luke, that will look for a motion to approve. Luke, followed by Katie, and then Luke, that was yours.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and to thank the, the city clerk and city attorney for their extensive work on this. Uh, it's a great honor to work with this council and, um, the staff here, and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, the work of it. Thank you both.
Right, Katie?
I have a quick question about the executive session thing. I just wondered why they can't join for executive session. I think I know the answer.
They can join, it's not saying that they can't join executive session and saying that the public doesn't need to be able to see, hear, or identify them during executive session.
Gotcha, okay.
Alright, so is there any further discussion on this? There is not, and so we'll call a rule.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Falco?
Aye.
If you think it's funny, Scott. Alright, so that ends the, um, the consent agenda. We'll move on to our, um, discussion. Uh, motion number nine for discussion, that the common council adopts the ordinance to amend in chapter three hundred dash thirty-four of the Code of the City of O'Neanta titled Fraternity, Sorority, and Membership Association Houses, which was laid on the desk of the common council on September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, and provide revised standards and regulations associated with fraternity, sorority, and membership association houses. So there's no motion to approve, we're going right into discussion.
There is, of course there is.
So, thank you, thank you, alright. So, moving now, I'm sorry? It was Luke, followed by, um, I thought it was Dave.
Proceed.
Yeah, I made the motion. Okay, so with that, we'll go to discussion, thank you, we appreciate that. So we'll go to discussion. Yes, well, Dave.
I just wanna thank, um, Stephen Yearley for the hard work that he did on this. I think this is the way to go to, um, uh, I'd say streamline, but I think it's, it's, it's just, um, unifies the procedure we, we go through every year with our Greek organizations. So it's basically changing the special use permit to an operating permit and putting it in the hands of the code office and then the full council. So I think it's the way to go.
Further discussion?
I just wanna be back and say that I think that, um, having the Greek organizations who live in our neighborhoods come and address us, make sure that we stay in communication with them, and we're able to, um, more appropriately represent our neighborhoods. So, um, I also think this is the good way to go.
Okay, no further. In that case, if you call a rule.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Falco?
Aye.
Okay, number ten, motion for discussion, that the common council authorizes the changes of term expiration dates for members of the city's Huntington Memorial Library Board of Trustees to conform with provisions of the city charter by revising the end of terms to reflect December thirty-one, which such dates and years being established for current members as follows. Carolyn Austin through December twenty-twenty-three. Diane Aronson through December twenty-twenty-six. David Hyland through December twenty-twenty-two. Linda Bolton through December twenty-twenty-four. And Kristi Vanderburg through December twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve? Um, we'll go with Luke, followed by Mark. And, uh, discussion on this, Dave?
Just a question for our city attorney. Were we able to make changes to the board of trustees in the?
This is done, this is done to request the library to bring in a performance with our provisions for appointment. We did not extend anyone's, um,
I assumed that, I assumed that.
We, we brought it, we brought it back into conformity. Uh, there was only one person who was, was, they took, they generally like two months or three months. There's one that was a year, a year and a half, and that was discussed, and this was approved by their board and by all the individuals who's, who's.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know there's so much for the library we can't change.
Yes, uh, and, and again, what this is actually doing is getting us back in sync so that what we're doing is consistent with what they're, what we're supposed to do, and get their records consistent in what we're supposed to do in relation to that.
Gotcha, thank you. Any further discussion with the topic? Okay, with that, yeah, Len?
So, just for clarity, we did not extend their terms, David?
We did not, no. Every, every single one of them has been shortened.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further, um, discussion possibilities, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Falco?
Aye.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to motion number eleven, that the common council, that the common council concurs with the mayor's recommendations to appoint the following to city boards and/or commissions for the housing commission, Kurt Schulte, with an expiration date in his term of July sixth, twenty-twenty-four. And do we have motion to approve?
Second.
Followed by Dave, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, and, um, discussion? Any discussion, Luke?
Mr. Murphy, if you don't mind, um, just a few words about Kurt, I mean, I don't know if we've had.
Well, um, I probably am the person who knows Kurt least well, although I've had an opportunity to spend some time with him recently, and, um, he is a, um, he, he's a public servant, you know, who, um, has garnered an awful lot of, um, you know, esteem from, um, many. I've had any number of people refer me to him. I finally had an opportunity to sit down with him. Uh, it took a little while for him to, uh, come on board for the housing commission. He was weighing all of his, you know, all of his various requirements, which are significant, but he, um, feels compelled, uh, to engage in this because he feels that this is a, this is a very good use at this time, and, and we appreciate it. He's going to need to be involved in both the housing commission and the technical, uh, housing work group. So he's committing to two meetings per month on top of this otherwise very busy schedule. But there are other folks that have known and worked with Kurt, um, a bit, Dave, as a.
If I could, if I could, you're out of here. I've known Kurt for twenty-five years, he's a practicing attorney, until he, until he left private practice, become the executive director of the City of O'Neanta Housing Authority, which he has been for fifteen years now, I believe. So, so he has extensive knowledge, uh, in public housing and has a great expertise.
Yeah, I appreciate you filling that out for me, yes, um, so, and, and Dave as well, speak to, um, you know, to Kurt's.
He was on the original housing commission, so.
Thank you.
So we are, you know, um, we lost Audrey, but honestly, um, we'll keep watching the work group, but, um, this is a, this is a nice addition to the housing commission. We very much appreciate it if you're watching.
Great, excellent, thank you.
Excellent. Um, any further discussion? With that, if we can call a vote.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Falco?
Aye.
Very good, so at this point, now we move on to discussion of the Lower Wilbur Park Basketball Court. And I'm just gonna open this up to general discussion.
Cheryl, talk to me.
Yep.
This obviously has been kind of an issue for quite a few years. Medina's today mentioned coming in June of nineteen, of twenty-twenty, I think we were, we're still alive at that particular time. There's certainly, the, the change of the use of that particular court has disrupted, uh, life for many of the neighbors in that particular area. This is the single issue that I get more calls about, more concerns about in half for the, pretty much the duration of my time here in council. I think Medina's kind of put it in a really, um, something that we can kind of think about is that we're putting our neighbors in a position to have to call the police on people that are simply doing what they should, they can be doing in the park, is having fun and playing basketball. This is, it's a great idea to have more basketball courts in the city. I'm absolutely supportive of that. I think we've got, we've demonstrated we've got a great basketball culture here. The Main Street closing, all the tournament was wonderful. So, great idea, wrong place. And so rather than continue to throw kind of money at this to try to fix the situation, it's just not working well, what I'd like to propose is that we remove the, uh, the rims and the backboards and rethink about how we would use the, um, the post in some type of way to really make it a family-friendly area. I think that would be certainly something that would be, um, a nice kind of addition to our park and then allow us to rethink where we would use the basketballs and the rims and maybe get new stanchions, new posts that we could, uh, put up elsewhere. Um, and I'm, I'm very supportive of, you know, expanding the, or maybe even looking at the area on the upper Wilbur Park. But for now, I think this has been incredibly disruptive to folks that kind of bought homes thinking that it was gonna be just a game of tennis, which is a radically different game in terms of noise level. Um, and this has been a real challenge for them over the past two years. Their quality of life has certainly been impacted.
Um, I would like to second, um, Mark Davies', um, suggestion. I think, um, we've had folks that have been here, uh, thirty-two years, at least, they said. Um, if their quality of life is to the, the point where they're, they're considering leaving, they've got neighbors considering leaving, um, I think it's something that we really should be taking into account. And likewise, I think it's, it's great that we've got such a strong and vibrant basketball culture. I, I don't think it's, it's necessarily, it should be at the expense of, of, um, folk quality of life.
Scott?
Great, I kind of have a question for you. In all quality of life, we talked about just doing the backboards and the rims. What was the reason why we couldn't take the poles out?
They're in country. So they wouldn't really come out and be reused.
Oh, that makes sense. I just couldn't, I couldn't remember, so like, well, if we just moved everything, but. I, I'm gonna, you know, when they came in front of quality of life and stuff, I'm gonna, you know, really agree. I think that, you know, it kind of disrupts not being able to use your back, especially during the summer, your backyard, your back porch. Um, I think there's, I think we can do another use there, and, uh, I think Parks and Rec, uh, committee probably has or would have some more ideas of what we might be able to do there. And, um, like Mark said, maybe move the basketball to another location in Wilbur Park or expand, you know, another area. So, I mean, I think, you know, tensions were good, just didn't quite, you, you know, kind of missed it a little bit.
Katie?
Oh, it's my turn?
Well, I, did, did you not have, um, some strategies around how that court might be painted and it goes back a ways?
Yeah, we had talked about, um, painting like, you know, something cool on the floor that would be more suggestive of like a game of horse or around the world or something like that. So it could still be basketball, but it would be more like kid basketball, um, potentially lowering the hoops a little bit, um. Yeah, those things have been discussed.
In fact, it seems to me too that there was some conversation about keeping one, one basketball, even net, even that's, it might be lowered for kids so that there'd still be the option of, you know, a three-on-three or one-on-one or horse or, or hour or whatever, you know, kind of basketball, as an option with other things being, you know, suggested through, you know, the painting of the, of the pavement. Mark?
If I could respond to that, that was an attempt that we did not align the, the courts to hope that it would kind of slow down the, the type of really kind of formal play. And it's had no impact on it, people know where the lines are essentially. Um, I think moving it to half-court would simply change the number of people that are on the court. It wouldn't change the nature of, of the, the sound and the disturbances and the challenges that come along with, uh, again, that, that young people are using them inappropriately. It's just, it's very different than how it's been used for thirty years, and it's very disruptive of the neighbors. So, I'm not trying to shoot down, um, you know, reusing those courts. I think we need to think about purposely doing something now that will encourage family use or, or kids playing, um, rather than, uh, you know, young adults and adults playing, playing basketball there, kind of.
I just wanna jump in real quick before I go to Dave. Um, so if you're a little, uh, you know, um, I have a basketball net in the backyard, right? And, and it went to a, a higher level as my son grew older. When it was low, you know, seven foot, you know, he loved it and he could dunk. But, uh, you know, it wasn't something that an adult wanted to play on. Would something like that, you know, um, having a net that's permanently set at a height that is not appropriate for adults, but would, you know, allow kids to play? Would that be, you know, a, again, that's, that's, I have no dog in this shop, but I just want to, you know, throw that out there. Katie?
Well, I think we should really look at what our local elementary schools have. If we really want this to be a family play area. Uh, and I agree with everything that you've said about that. I think if we, if we keep a backboard there, even one, I think we're still gonna run into the same issues. I think, um, and before I get into what I think should probably be there, I just wanna say that I think when that park was designed, there was a reason why the basketball was put where it was. Basketball is a very different game than tennis. Instead of having a maximum of four people, you're gonna have, you've got ten people playing, and it's, it's a much more aggressive sport. It's a great sport, it's just more aggressive. It, it, like, we wouldn't have an outdoor hockey rink right there either, for the same reasons. Uh, but I think if we want it to be a, a family play area, we should look at what Valley View has done outside that's, um, been very positive and gets lots of action with the kids, is, um, there's tetherball, there's four-square, they have like four different four-square boxes set up, and they're loaded with kids all throughout lunch. Um, and then Greater Plains, what they've got is, um, it's one of those baskets. They put it in, uh, years ago. It's a basket, you throw the basket, the ball in, and it comes out one of three or four different ways, I forget which. And that was lowered down to a kid height, and the kids played with it all the time. So I, I think maybe what we should do for now is take the basketball backwards off, leave the poles there, and then until we can really decide what we want to do with the space. Uh, another area is, I know it's kind of old, but the kids still play it, is hopscotch. We can have a painted hopscotch board there, but stuff like this, but there's a lot of space there. I think we just haven't really looked at the simplest place to go and see what the kids are playing.
Any other, yes, Len?
So, Kate, Parks and Rigs, what's the next location within Wilbur Park? Because I want to ensure that the young people have an opportunity and old people have an opportunity to play basketball. So where are they looking at putting the next location?
Well, that's a great question. Two, two spots have been discussed. You know, I think right now Parks was looking at how much it's gonna cost to relocate the court. Because obviously, well, I mean, like Mark said, you know, it, we've already spent this money, so we want to make sure that going forward, we're not just, you know, keeping the, keeping paint or whatever. So, we need to know how much it's going to cost to relocate the court if we do decide to take the poles out or we leave them. There is the court up on the upper level, obviously, which is in really bad shape, cracks like this, weeds growing out. That would need to be resurfaced and that's not cheap. So, that would be like the logical place, right? The issue with that is that that's, you know, I mean, these folks are complaining about foul language next to the kids that live next door. That's right next to the, the playground is near the large pavilion where we rent it for parties and barbecues and, you know what I mean? So, that's, you know, if, if that's a concern that we're gonna take seriously, then I think we need to apply it across the board. The other thing, and I think that the Medina's have expressed an interest in this as a suitable solution, is to just move it to the other end of that fenced-in court. So beyond court, so those are six, seven, eight, as you go toward the houses. So right now it's court eight, moving it to court six, which is closer to the pool. Just to get that noise a little bit farther away from the houses. That's something that they've expressed would, would be suitable, if I'm remembering correctly. Did that answer your question?
Dave?
Dave? Something you said that I, I wanna, I'm thinking about. With the other basketball court with the bad language, I mean, this might be a question for the police, whomever, to see if there's been an issue with reports of bad language because the, up at the other court next to the playground? Because my gut tells me there's less, there's gonna be less usage of it because the playground is right there and kids are there and parents are there. And it's where they could be self-limiting, I guess. I mean, I could be wrong, but I'm, I'm guessing that's, that might be the case up there?
It's possible. I mean, my.
So we have the same situation down in Neo Park? Isn't that basketball court right next to the playground?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little closer, but it's, it's a little closer in Wilbur Park.
It may force people to, there's kids around, you kind of, there's always, there might be one that, that rattles off a few and then the rest of them are gonna yell at them and stop or hurt us down.
That would be a little bit more selfish, shouldn't it? Scott, you had something?
Yeah. Oh, no, I was just saying that there's the, the one court in Neo that, that's gonna be slated to be replaced, whatever, the other one. If they decide to do it, because they're all retorsed to the pavilion. But there's the one by the playground that's in bad shape. I don't know how often it's used with, with the stuff grown and all and stuff, but.
It's usually used, I mean, more like we would anticipate, or we had anticipated at this one to use where it's just like casual, you know? But it does have a nice new surface, this one.
I was just wondering, because we're coming up towards winter weather, is this something that maybe Parks and Rec Committee could take a look at, go back to the council with some ideas?
I mean, they've been looking at it for two years, making their recommendation. So, I mean, I could, I could kick it back to them, but I think ultimately.
I guess I'm not sure what the recommendation was, that's.
Their recommendation was to keep basketball where it is. And the reason being, I thought, I'll just, the reason is that, well, one of the things that I thought was made a good deal of sense was that basketball and tennis are team sports, so having those team sports all together in one location makes a certain amount of sense. And then the other thing was, you know, like we're talking about, that this decision has been made over a number of years through a variety of folks' input, that money has been spent. And now, you know, we're looking at spending money to undo a decision that had all that backing, didn't have the backing of the neighbors presumably, you know, for the benefit of some folks, which I'm not, I'm not assigning value to, I'm just saying it, it would benefit, you know, a few folks whose properties back up to the park. And, you know, there's so much that we want to do in the parks. So is it wise to, you know, go back on a decision that has been made?
Maybe that's our decision to say, we're gonna do this and we will find one somewhere to write this so it doesn't come out of the parks and whatever budget there is, we're gonna, you know?
To, to, just to focus on the decision made, I want to just make sure that we all understand when that decision was made. Shortly after we pivoted and we're, we're beginning to do things online. I, I recall that, that we, we looked at it, but I don't recall that we were able to see maps of where it was. It was mentioned, frankly, when it was mentioned, I was tuned in on that because I used to live very close to that. I thought we were talking about Neo Park. So I just think that the decision was made in a really difficult time. I don't want to rely upon that, that we made that decision with all the knowledge that was available to us.
Sure. I'm sorry, just want to jump in and just say that our vote was, but the, I'm talking about the pre-work of planning, there was, there was a lot that went into that, which I wasn't on the committee for, so I'm just getting.
Granted, but I, I would argue that it's short-sighted and the team argument to me is really doesn't hold a lot of weight. But if I could just really quickly add this one thing, is if we're gonna be having a conversation about ARPA funds in the next Council meeting, and if this is valuable to us to begin thinking about basketball and basketball courts, perhaps we should be having the conversation about ARPA, should include thinking about some basketball courts? And I think that's worth.
Very reasonable. I'm going with you.
To your point about the ARPA funds, just so you know, I think an ARPA fund, the entire thing might cover the cost of maybe one basketball court, a brand new one. They're expensive, they're really expensive. But I remember that we had talked originally about putting up different fencing and we were looking at different kinds of fencing to block that off. And then we ultimately decided on a family play place. And then, next thing I know, we're back to the same discussion because we've got huge games out there. So, again, my, my opinion is I think we need to remove the basketball backboards and then fix the upper court or build a new one over both. I think, I think we really need to, if we're gonna remove that court, I think we need to put something else in somewhere else.
My only concern, certainly I, I get the concerns of the neighbors and the, I'm not joking, the AV was a, you know, that was terrifying, seeing that. So I get that. I, I'm concerned about presenting a message that we are disenfranchising any part of our community. I, 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 I have a concern about two poles that are, are there with nothing on them. There were obviously, that's where they took down the basketball net and backwards. So number one, maybe is there something we can do with two poles that is, you know, not so obvious? But number two, I think it's incumbent on us to take seriously the fact that we are taking something away from folks that, that use it, clearly it's being used. And maybe in this ARPA discussion, your point is well taken, Dave, about the cost of a full-blown basketball court. But, you know, maybe we take a look with some assistance as to what might be possible within our resources so that we're not disenfranchising or, or appearing to disenfranchise any part of our community. So that's, that's my only concern. I certainly understand the neighbors. Any other thoughts, Kelly?
I'm wondering, as, like, for the noise, are there signs posted that, like, maybe, maybe we could, could there be an ordinance where you can have a loud radio or is there anything posted about that?
Yeah, it's posted.
It is.
Well, it's posted at the entrance of the park and then we originally posted a sign there, but the sign was removed because we were accused of disenfranchising a certain group of people that play basketball.
Or plenty of citizens, you know, juggling.
But the noise, but as far as the noise ordinance, I mean, that's on the, on the sign entering Wilbur Park.
Yeah, so on Joseph Lund Drive, you go in, there's like a big, it's like, stone and on that it says, no loud music. The neighbors, and I, I totally get this, you know, you don't want to call the police every time people are out there. I think the noise ordinance exists. If the noise ordinance is, if the noise is disruptive, then the ordinance is being violated, then that's why you call the police. So, I get it. I mean, I think that having the sign on the court made a certain amount of sense just as a reminder because it is the single facility in any of the parks that is closest to a residential neighborhood. It makes sense. I don't know. I mean, and, and it sounds like that was reasonably effective and they were upset that that had been taken away.
Honestly, I, I don't know that it was effective. We, we, we don't know because it wasn't there long. So I, I.
Yeah.
So what I would suggest is this, we're gonna be looking at the ARPA money at our next Council meeting. Could we also look at, you know, some details, you know, to, to a couple of points, you know? Do we know where our options are? Can we visually take a look on the screen of where we might be able to put, you know, if we're gonna take these out, and it sounds like there might be consensus here to do that, we're gonna take these out for the benefit, you know, of neighbors', you know, quality of life. Where do we put them? What, you know, and how do we take care of that? So we take a look at actual physical maps that say, you know, on the screen and say, this is an option, that's an option. I mean, we can look at too what our costs might be to do something if not a full-blown court. And then we can look at that in the context of the, the ARPA monies as well. And, and at that point, you know, I think we might be able to arrive at a decision that, you know, take care of most of the interest that, you know, we're addressing here. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
I have a question.
But, but I think we should take the, I still think we should take those backboards down now. I think we shouldn't remove that, but then we have that conversation over the ARPA funds at the next Council meeting. I mean, my other question though is, is the upper, in Upper Wilbur Park, is that court not usable? I know it's, it's, it's rashed, but is it not usable? Okay, because we do have other courts. I mean, we, we had one court in Wilbur for decades.
Right, and it was unusable for.
So we've only added a second court just recently, so I mean, are we disenfranchising? I mean, we better repair the old one.
So it, it sounds like there's a consensus right now to pull down the backboards. And if that's the case, you know, and then we'll have this meeting and we'll, we'll see where we can go toward, you know, trying to be as Solomon-esque as, as we possibly can about this. But is there someone who wants to put together a, a motion to, in fact, take these backboards down, you know, and then we'll come? Do, do we need a motion to do that? Are we not, we need a motion to do that?
No. We do not need a motion to.
Okay, very good. My life just got easier. All right, fine, then it sounds like there's a consensus in the room that that's what we should do, that's the, that's the, you know, the short-term fix on this thing. It's not a fix, it's a short-term action on this thing. And then we'll look at, hopefully arriving at a fix on this, is probably not the best choice of words, when we get to our next Council meeting. But we'll look at ARPA funds, we'll look at, you know, possibilities of how we might be able to, you know, address, you know, the need to play.
I would suggest whatever we come up with at the next Council meeting regarding this, if we do come up with a, a choice for a fix, we could even put a sign up on that area saying, this is what council decided to do and that way, there'll be some relief.
Sounds reasonable. So, so are we all then in agreement, we'll pull the basketball backboards and nets for now? Is it necessary to pull the backboards or is just the nets good enough?
I'd say the rooms and the backboards, there's no reason.
Rooms and the backboards, they get, there are all the pieces. So we'll take those down for now, we'll revisit this at our next Council meeting, come up with something that will, will move us hopefully in a better direction for everybody.
Yes. Yeah, so, I don't know how bad this other court is. I like the location of it. I agree with you, Dave, that it's a better location to have it up above. It was there for decades before, for whatever reason it was put down below. I don't want to see our neighbors in that neighborhood listening to, to noise that they don't particularly want to listen to, that they haven't had to listen to for thirty-seven odd years. But I also don't want to cut off the young people and the old people that are using this basketball court now with nothing to play. Greg, you're saying that the upper court is somewhat usable. Is there a product that we could put down, given the temperature that we're having out there, that could make it a little bit smoother, fill in the cracks?
I'd have to, I haven't inspected that before.
Just, just, just.
I don't know what the issues are specifically, so I can't answer that. I mean, it's asphalt, so, you know, an asphalt repair will usually, or a road is, it'd be similar to that.
Correct.
Probably put the cracks yellow on it, but.
Correct.
You could look at that. I just don't, don't know about that, so.
I would just like to have those options before we move forward in the next Council meeting. Because if we're gonna talk about ARPA, it's been, you know, a lengthy discussion. I want to hear what our options are. I just really don't want to cut people off because I know it's a hunk to get all the way down to Neo Park, so. And if that is the best location, I'm trusting you guys that that's the best location.
Greg, can you do an assessment of that in the next couple of weeks?
So we will have that assessment, we'll have some maps for display where we can talk about, you know, optimal locations, other options as, you know, they may enter anybody's mind for this discussion. We'll, we'll get a ballpark on, you know, we, we will be able to get a full-blown basketball court likely with the monies that we have. We could. Well, yeah, hopefully we aren't really talking about.
Right.
You know, using all of the ARPA money on that. But, but anyway, we'll look at, we'll look at some options.
Yeah, we had a court in our original projects that were approved last fall, that approved when we won.
All right, so, so we'll have those options. So we'll, we'll be working with, you know, a nice set of acts essentially and should be a mix and addition based on that. And meantime, the neighbors should be happy for, you know, the back, as of, you know, pretty soon, a couple of days, most likely, we'll, we'll see those nets and backboards down. And I guess any entertaining options for two poles, have you, have you here? Is that something besides two poles on the ground? Anyways, bring some lights or something. All right, so that ends, I think, our discussion on that. And then I'll ask, is there any additional business or matter for a council discussion? Ben?
I had sent you a resolution for green lighting for veterans.
Oh, gosh, thank you, Dave. I am so sorry. Do you happen to have that?
I could pull it out of my computer and verbally read it. Basically, it's a resolution that NISEC is asking municipalities to approve. It's looking at our community, our city buildings, putting in green bulbs and our community putting in green bulbs, recognizing that veterans are having a difficult period transitioning into civilian life and have been for a while. So that's the, the main crux and it is sponsored by NISEC, so I sent it to the mayor.
He, he did. And I think I have it here.
But I would.
Happy to read it.
Sure.
Okay. So, "This is supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, permanent status. Whereas the residents of the City of Oneonta, New York have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and its community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women that served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the City of Oneonta seeks a lot of those individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the New York State veteran population has decreased by forty-four percent over the last twenty years. And whereas veterans continue to serve their community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign, foreign wars, church groups, civil service. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future." life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the city of Oneonta, New York appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel made while defending freedom and believes specific recognition be accorded them in appreciation of their service and to demonstrate the honor and support they have earned, therefore it be, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Military Service City. Hereby declares from October fourth, twenty-twenty-two through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active services, therefore be it further resolved. Then in observance of Operation Green Light, the city of Oneonta, New York encourages its citizens in patriotic tradit- tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who the, who the immeasurable sacrifices helped to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence." So with that, do you want to make a motion? And do I have a second on that motion? Scott? Any discussion? My sincere apologies for not having this on the agenda. Um, if you will?
Councilmember Murphy?
Sure. Aye.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Councilmember Risperger?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
Aye.
Good, all right. Very good. Any other, um, additional business? Anything else for council discussion? All right, is there any correspondence? There is no correspondence. There is, I believe, a need for executive session to discuss a potential matter, is there not?
First potential contract negotiations and then a matter leading to some fiscal settlement.
All right, so in that case, we are going to need to motion to move into executive session. Is it Katie? Sorry.
Yeah, Rosie.